Okay.
Okay, got it. Good morning, everybody. Like to call the Indigenous Commission meeting to order. It is March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, ten oh nine A M. Rose, could you do the roll call for us, please?
Yes. Commissioner Cuddy I?
Yes, here, I'm present.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Curly? And then Commissioner Co-Chair Lance is here.
Here.
And then Commissioner Mariah Zavala, Co-Chair, is here, right?
Present.
And then Commissioner Francis is on the line. Commissioner Husky?
I'm here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Moana? She's not here. Commissioner Marks? Commissioner Marshall? That's it.
Great. All right, would look, would somebody like to volunteer for the land acknowledgement?
I can do it, Commissioner Lance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Commissioners of all. Next is the public comment at this time. Any member of the public may address the Commissioner, the Commission, or any subject within their jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the Commission on that day. Due to open meeting laws, the Commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the Commission on any item that is on the agenda, please wait for the Chair to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Maximum three minutes per individual. And I believe we have anybody from public here. We'll move on. Approval minutes, none at this time. Minutes will be on the April third, twenty twenty five agenda. Item number five, general business, none at this time. Item number six, discussion items, the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan. Community Development Senior Planner Lauren Clementino is not here, so we have Elsa Irving or Early.
Yeah, Elsa Erling. I'm the Associate Planner in Community Development.
Awesome. We appreciate you stepping in today to help us out with this. Elsa is going to be helping to continue this presentation and discussion. The Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan received over twenty four hundred comments during the sixty day public review. There are comments pertaining to indigenous people in the region and how they are described in the plan and may be impacted by some of the policies. Staff is requesting additional feedback and discussion to help resolve these comments. I was just thinking, probably like any of us on the Commission who'd like to, or who are going to be commenting. I, I think we could just maybe raise the hand on the click there. So because that puts us all in order for who's, who's wanting to speak. And Elsa, if you could click on that and see who's, who's like first and second and third, so we're all in order. That, all right, Elsa?
All right. Well, thanks for having me and thanks for scheduling this meeting. So I know that last time when Lauren and Sarah came to the Commission meeting, we were talking about the comments we've received, and this is the spreadsheet of the comments on the regional plan that relate to indigenous people. I believe everyone should have this spreadsheet, but if not, I can. Yeah, it looks like Rose is nodding that she sent it out. And so the, the goal for today is to get some, to get feedback on these comments and discuss them. And I don't know to what extent you were able to talk about them at the last meeting. So it, you know, we can pick up where you left off, or we can start from the beginning. But some things to note about the comments. So some of them are related to specific goals and policies in the plan. Some of them are related to action items, which I can talk a little bit about, like the, the difference between those, those different parts of the plan and how they work. But and then there's also comments that are more on these sort of background information sections, which are still really important. For example, chapter one is sort of an introductory chapter that has a lot of content about the, the region and sort of setting the, the scene that talks about indigenous people. And yeah, we want to make sure that we're, we're getting the wording right and the, the, the way that we're introducing the region. And then there are also these comments, comments on implementation guidelines. And just in our revisions of the plan, so the implement, so originally there were the, the goals and policies, which are really at the, the heart of the plan. And they are sort of, there, there's a legal way that they're applied to development cases that we see in planning and development services. So how those goals and policies are worded is, is definitely very important. And then the implementation guidelines don't have the same legal status. They were more suggestions for how to carry out the goals and policies than getting a little into the specifics. And then the action items were like, this is what staff should do at the city or county. This is a, a list of projects that we could, we could start or do. And in thinking about the plan as a whole and the comments we received about it being sort of confusing and, and conflicting in these different areas. Staff has kind of reorganized and gotten rid of a lot of implementation guidelines or brought them when into other parts of the plan so that it's, there's not these different four categories. Instead, we just have goals and policies and action items. In many cases, the implementation guidelines were kind of muddling what the goals and policy is, we're already saying, or would be a little, cause conflicts when staff are actually trying to apply the goals and policies. So I'm just noting that because some of these comments are on the implementation guidelines. But at this point, the guidelines have been, some of these have been removed or turned into different, different parts of the plan, like a policy. So I'm, I'm open to, to how we want to start this. We could look at the specific goals and policies. We could talk about chapter one. We could go comment by comment, or if there's a particular area that's, that stood out to someone that we want to start, that, that works for me as well.
Elsa? During the last meeting, I think we, we, there was, the first comments were made about number, line eleven. And that's where we, I think that took up most of our time till the end. Maybe a few other ones, but that seemed to be one that was, had a lot more comments, but we didn't really have a solid ending to that as to what we'd like to have.
Got it. Yeah, well, we can, we can start with this one, and I'm happy to, to add some notes in here as we're talking, or. Yeah, maybe you can catch me up a little bit on, on the conversation there.
Right. I think there, in my view, there were, there's two different views on this, I, I think in this area. I think that there's a, a view, there was a view of one of our Commissioners who is Hopi was fine with having, you know, like a, an umbrella or a generalization of indigenous peoples or indigenous nations where, where things are, are noted that way. However, I think there's also one where it's, it's more. I can't, I don't know how to say. I think there's, there's a way of labeling or calling everybody's name by, by each of their tribe, their indigenous names or their nation names, or, or tribal names, if that's what is, is called because of contracts and because of treaties. We're, we're in, in that tribal type language, and that's not always the appropriate for people who identify as indigenous people. Where most, some people will feel that indigenous is more dignified versus somebody seeing tribal members. And I think there's, there's a new generation of views that, that do that because the, maybe the older generations view, still view as tribal members or, or Indians, which is still not appropriate in the younger generation. And so those are the two concepts that are, we're dealing with here. And if we're looking really at the contracts and treaty language, then of course, American Indians or Indians, those kinds of words are in there for, for that. But as, as indigenous nations have come forward through these different, you know, different ways of perceptions and perspectives, more of our younger generation are identifying as indigenous people. Or maybe Native Americans or natives versus American Indian, Indians or, or tribe. So those are some things that are, we're kind of looking at, which maybe the general population, Western population does not always see or understand. That's, and that's what I see in this, in this conversation with that. Co-Chair Lance?
Oh, yes. Elsa, so just looking at the comments and stuff, you know, I see a lot of people commenting on, you know, how to address Nato's or indigenous peoples and stuff like that. You know, I'm, I'm thinking like with the regional plan, like is there, you know, like, I guess when we're coming into the city or coming into the region, is there a way to, or is there, you know, because it's so, because it's quite a big document, you know, I, I didn't, I did scan through a lot of it. But I don't, I don't feel like there's a sense of, like indigenous people here, you know, when we're going through the plan. I don't, I don't know if there's a place to be able to put that like its own, its own like topic, you know what I mean, for indigenous people? Because like when we're coming into town, like we don't, we don't really, we don't, I don't, I don't really see a lot of that. In town, there's some to identify us being here, but in the plan, I guess is what I'm saying. Is there, you know, because there's a lot of, you know, touching on, you know, the, the people, the culture, the different tribes that are here, but there's no real area that just talks about indigenous people. Kind of like if we had that, the Cultural Center that is proposed to be built or going to be built for City of Flagstaff, that's going to be a good place for tourists and people who are new to the area to be able to see what the area is, is composed of, you know, all the different tribes, all the information, you know, where indigenous people gather, you know, like selling their, you know, what they make, the jewelry, the food and stuff like that, you know, those are part of who we are around here and what we do, you know. So it's, I'm just kind of like, I guess, thinking like, maybe there could be a little bit more. And it's not really related to a comment here. It's more like a new comment. What I'm talking about is like having that sense of indigenous people. And we're in a land, we're in a city surrounded by indigenous people.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I totally see that, that your point there. I think we talk a lot about, or we talk about indigenous people in the introduction, but in the later chapters, I don't know that there's a huge focus in any chapter. I think there's policies and goals that talk about indigenous people. But there may be places where we could add like a, a call out box or a section that, that gets more into detail. I think, is there, I mean, you, you had mentioned the community center, and I'm curious if there is, like, you know, if we were adding a section, what the focus you would want to be? Is it about sort of celebrating culture or like gathering? Is it more about natural resources or, you know, is there kind of how it might fit with the chapters that we have?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I was just going to say that there's, um, like a policy CR dot to the cultural resources. You know, I, I couldn't see, you know, I was kind of looking over the other areas, like where could this be put in? You know, and I, I don't know if it's, if it's too late to be able to, we'd have to have some more information. I was just asking if there was like, is there somewhere within that document, you know, that, that, that really talks about the area and the, and the people? And it does touch on different, different items throughout the whole document, you know, where, where, where the indigenous people are, are a part of in the demographics and different things, you know. I see that, but I don't know, just, you know, under cultural resources, you know, it's kind of makes me think of, you know, when we're here or visitors are here in town, like how, how do they know? You know, like people from the outside are coming in and they're seeing native people. They might not know that they're native people, you know, because we're brown, there's, there may be thinking, oh, they're, they're Hispanic people here, you know, without, without, you know, knowing and, and the information. I don't know how, how people, when they're here, what they're looking up. But in this regional plan, that's what I'm talking about is maybe being able to implement that, you know, hey, we have a cultural center here. It talks about the history of the people that are, that are in the area, you know, you know, have a little bit of history of who we are back then to now. Now it's a little different, you know, you see our, our, our people like at the surrounding flea markets, Cameron on the roadside selling jewelry, you know, the native foods, the local native foods and stuff like that. You know, what, what we see, a, a lot of the Native Americans are in the construction industry, you know, and the framings, you know, a lot of the area is, is, a lot of the manpower has native people in it, you know, in certain industries, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say all, but, you know, in certain areas, you know, you could see a lot of native people. So I guess that's what I'm getting at. It's, it's kind of broad what I'm saying, but. Kind of hard to put out what I'm, what I'm trying to say.
You know, I think I, that, what, that's kind of bringing to mind for me is we have a section, and I'm going to switch over to sharing like the live document. But it's just a moment to get over there. So in the introduction, I, I think what, what you're talking about is making me think of the introduction chapter because it's sort of, you're talking about, you know, people who, who might not have a full picture of the region and, and are sort of, yeah, wanting to get an understanding who might be less familiar.
And.
Yeah, and I think that's sort of, so in our introduction, we have, this is like the, the beginning of the plan. And we have, oh, sorry, just zoomed in too much. So we, we have a section here that, so we're introducing the, the region. We're talking about the peaks and then what is the Flagstaff region? And we've reorganized this a little bit since the draft that went out to the public. So after saying what is the Flagstaff region, we have this section, the region's shared history. And we could change this heading a little bit and add here. But it's, it's a pretty brief section right now, and I think maybe there's a way we could add here and, sorry, talk more about the cultural influence of indigenous people. Because right now, we say a quarter of the county's current population is Native American. And we say many of the local place names reflect indigenous heritage. I think that would maybe be the place to say, like, you know, there are, you know, kind of what you were describing of the different gathering spaces and economic. Yeah, the, the communities and gathering spaces and, and economy that's here, that's related to indigenous people.
Okay. I guess, um, yeah, I was just looking in the plan, you know, to see if there was a little bit more information. It does touch on a lot. And then a lot of the comments are like corrections and, you know, of how to be identified and, you know, talking about native people. Who's the Equity Climate Advisory Group?
Um, I don't, I don't know, like, who is a member of them? They're not, they're not an official commission, but they're, I think they're a group that's associated somewhat with the Sustainability Commission. I actually don't know a ton about like who, who is a, a member of that group, but they're, they're a, a local group that submitted comments on the plan.
Got it. Yeah, I just noticed a lot of comments.
Yeah.
And the next person's hand up is Commissioner Francis?
Go ahead. Thank you so much, everyone. Just a bit of clarification. Elsa, is the plan you're looking at the one we were sent?
Um, so the, the one that you were sent is the one that went out for the sixty day public review, and that's the one that received the comments. Since then, we've been revising. So yeah, unfortunately, it's a little out of sync with the document you have, but this is the, this is the live one that we've been working in since then. But if, if you have any questions about a particular section, I can, I can pull it up and show like what it currently looks like. Yeah.
Elsa, on your question on the Indigenous Community Cultural Center, I can send you some information on that. Just to clarify a little bit on what that would look like, or, I mean, it was still in the planning stages. So we barely got through the R S O Q, so we're, we're still getting there. And it's really for a community space for indigenous people who, that will share out with the public and the community to share, you know, educational things. It'll be a platform for education, to share whatever. There'll also be a, a community space for maybe a visiting nation leadership that might want to have meetings here in town. It could be artists that could be selling there, not on a continual basis, but certain times of the year or something. But those are all things that whoever the city partner is going to be, who's going to oversee that, that, that space, they're going to be doing the programming for, for the, for the center.
Got it. Yeah, and I, I do think like, because this document is looking to twenty forty five, we, we want to take a, a big picture approach and make, and not get super detailed into something that might change, you know, in, in ten years. But I think we could, we could definitely talk about the, the Indigenous Cultural Center in a broad way and, and talk about gathering spaces. So, yeah. And it can be updated, of course, if something gets, comes out of date or, or changes.
Commissioner Husky?
Hello, Elsa. I have two things. First, along the same message as Commissioner Francis. So the one that I'm looking at jumps from one dash nine down to three, four, three, four. And it looks like it cuts off the policy, policy in E point two. And maybe there's a policy in E point one.
So. Sure, I can, yeah, let me pull that, pull up the.
Okay, so here he says, so what that is about. And then a second, so I noticed in a lot of the policies, a lot of the goals and a lot of different sections have wording that has to do with collaboration with indigenous nations on certain topics. I was wondering, at the beginning of the document, wouldn't it make sense to just broadly say that this plan is going to be put together with indigenous nations of, you know, the ones who are a part of the whole region? So then you kind of cut out a whole bunch of those extra wording since, as far as I understand from reading this, a lot of indigenous nations are going to be a part of it and to help establish a lot of these goals and policies.
Sorry, just making a note about, yeah, so, okay, so on your first question, this is the, the, the full set of goals that are under neighborhoods and equity. And let me pull up also the link for you all to the full plan. So we tried, we tried to sort of make it a little easier to navigate by sending only the excerpts that were related directly to the comments, but I think it is helpful to be able to see the, the whole section. So I just put a link in the chat for the full document.
Okay.
But, yeah, so the overall goal is, is like, is broader. And then the, the policies get into specific groups or specific ways that, that to assist or to support equity with these groups. And then as to your question about overall collaboration. So the, the document does only apply to the region, which is, I can go over to the map of it. But it, while it does include some Navajo and Hopi trust land, it doesn't overlap directly with. So with, this is, the region is this box. So it doesn't overlap with any nations, but there, like you were saying, there's a lot of opportunities to collaborate on things like housing and, and natural resources and other topics as well, the economy. The way that, so we could have a, a statement about collaboration, but I think the, the purpose of having it in the goals and policies is to make it a little stronger and sort of, not just, you know, something we're describing, but something that we actually are putting in our goals and policies to do. So I think the best, I think it's best to bring that in through the goals and policies. But maybe there's a, a different type of policy we could put in that would be more overarching than what we have. So, you know, I'm definitely open to, to your thoughts there. Right now, I think, so the, let me get down to it. Right now, I think so the, let me get down to it.
But I think it's also like looking at that map. The region is is kind of a small area. It's not like Northern Arizona region or anything like that. It's a small Flagstaff area region versus, this is where the the city Flagstaff Regional Plan is in that little, that place that that in the map that she just showed. The comprehensive map, the comprehensive plan is for Coconino County. So that's bigger. So the, so it's kind of like um, the comprehensive plan is like the, kind of like the umbrella, right Elsa? And then underneath it is the amendment, um, other plans, like the regional plan. And I can't remember, there's a couple of other plans that that reside under that, um, under the the comprehensive plan. So I think that's where there's some, a little bit of um explanation to help.
Yeah, I was thinking just because a lot of, a lot of us live in Flagstaff now. Like, there's a lot of, who, also, a lot of us who grew up here, you know, um, so and we're, I guess, we just want to be more in the conversation of the people who live in Flagstaff versus like all the other nations, just like the ones who live here. But I get what you mean. Thank you.
And is there, so we have Policy RS seven is one of the ones that that got a lot of comments. Um, recognize and incorporate indigenous knowledge and cultural practices into natural and cultural resource affairs and projects. Should this be broadened? Would, is this one that you're kind of looking at with that in mind? Um, or I'm I'm trying to think if there were, what the collaboration policy was.
Where is that on the agenda, uh, on the, is it on the Excel sheet?
So RS seven um comes up in a few. Let me pull it over.
Rose, uh, on the Excel spreadsheet, there's some at thirty, starts at twenty-nine or twenty-eight. Actually, take it back, twenty-four, line twenty-four, and it goes all the way down.
Okay. All right, I was over here looking at the count, um, comment number.
Oh, yeah, well, there's um we had one, uh, so probably line twenty-seven S sixty-seven actively. This is a, so the original um policy is this first line. And then the suggestion actively collaborate with indigenous leaders to co-create solutions that respect tribal sovereignty traditions and ecological expertise. That's um one example of somewhat of a collaboration-related um policy that we could adjust or add.
Uh, I know that there's some people that um from our community that have been working with sustainability staff. So that might be a place where this is coming from as well. I'm glad they're mentioning mentioning and putting it on on for discussion. But is that what, I mean, if we're okay with that, or is that like gonna then transfer into the plan?
Yeah, I think um if we, if that wording is something that we like here, we can, we can put it in. It's, yeah, it's. Yeah.
This is where Commissioners, you are, you can say, we're okay with how this comment, we're okay with this comment. And then it can, Elsa can note that. If there's comments that are made that that need, that you need to um have input on, then this is the time to do it.
Rose, this is Commissioner Francis. So that's what I kind of had my my hand raised for, is the asking Elsa again. Um, so there's a lot on this document. And um personally, uh, I was very happy and surprised. Some of the comments weren't that bad. They were very um supportive of native indigenous um involvement. So uh, I just wanted to ask, though, were there things that your team felt that we should really look at? Or that before we move on? Is there something that is perplexing that you should, you know, that we need to address? You know, let's get that done.
Yeah, I think these, the goal and policy language is definitely important. So um, I think uh.
Can can you give a specific line on the um Excel and we can go through it?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I'm looking at these as a whole. And I think, like, deciding what we, whether we want to, so there, for example, there's this comment, couldn't RS seven and RS ten be combined? How are these policies different? And I think one thing that we want to know is, right now, we've RS ten, um, we've turned it into an action item. Um, and I can pull it up so we can look, we, I can explain a little more about it. But um um RS seven, um, you know, should we have RS seven? Should we have RS seven with this wording? Some of these comments are are talking a little bit more about the implementation, which gets a little further into the weeds. So I think the the key thing is um um, you know, whether to to keep RS seven as is, to um reword it, to uh not have it, to um change it in another way. Um, and then the other, like, really specific policies are NE two, um, which I can also uh get to, and then the cultural resources policy. So those are the ones that we're really looking at us um to get feedback on. But like um, like, we've been talking a little bit about, you know, other parts of the plan and and how we talk about indigenous people and where we where we maybe should add more. Um, that's also, you know, something we can talk about here. If, I think, for me, at least, getting the the policies nailed down is important.
Okay, thank you. But can we start on one then? What which one do you want to start on first?
Yeah, let's look at um, let's look at RS seven. So um so the current wording is, I'll pull up on my other document. So we currently have this in the Resource Stewardship and Resilience sec- chapter or section. And um, so it mentions both um natural and cultural resources affairs and projects. So um, I'll leave the policy up. And then some of the suggestions about the policy are um that we not only recognize and incorporate, but center and uplift indigenous knowledge in a mindful, mindful and a culturally appropriate way. So that's one uh rewrite for that policy, to use different words.
What what line is that on the Excel?
Uh, that is uh twenty-five, comment ON four nine one. Um, there's a comment below about clarifying that indigenous knowledge should come from indigenous people. So there maybe is a revision that could could help um express that. Uh, then we have the revision we were just talking about. That's adds actively collaborate with indigenous leaders to co-create solutions that respect tribal sovereignty traditions and ecological expertise. There's one that's about capitalization for of indigenous um in this co- policy. And then um a suggestion to broaden this policy to um not just say culture, natural and cultural resource affairs and projects, but all affairs and practices. Um, and then some questions about, or there's a suggestion to put decisions instead of affairs. Yeah, just going down the list. Um, questions about, the question about increasing biodiversity in the surrounding area. Would that be part of this policy? Um, the question about the relationship of this policy to snowball. And then um, this is a longer comment, L one nine one. But talking about the sort of how this gets carried out and what um you know, uh, the sort of burden of of calling for the, for um voices and opinions to be heard or considered um without sort of, yeah, just, just how this gets carried out.
Commissioners? Um, while you're thinking, I think the stronger these um goals and policies are, I think the the bet, you know, that's what we have to rely on. Like when people are having to do things in in this um climate equity type sections where we really need to have some um, some strength in in our plan. So I don't know, you know, I don't know how much, how many of these can be combined just to make it stronger. So anyway, I, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
I like the section where they say that um uplift in a culturally appropriate way kind of shows like respect for the cultural practices that we have for natural resources.
I think the the comment, there's some comments about um the equity from the Equity Climate Advisory on thirty-three. I think there's some, I think this is the reason why, you know, we're there, um, we're we're being asked for input. And because the people are really wanting to incorporate some of the wording here. But as long as there's no comment, I mean, that's why it's like, they don't feel comfortable in stating these things unless there is um some, some input from indigenous communities.
So uh, this is Commissioner Francis, and I'm just going to um apologize. And I'm going to speak freely about how I feel, uh, especially reading that statement on thirty-three. Um, I it I think Flagstaff is progressing in a pace that uh that it's trying to move forward. It's trying to be inclusive and be uh very mindful of um the native people that have been in this environment uh way before any of this white paper came into place. And it's very hard that over time, what we're trying to do is then address why we're having such a difficult time communicating between the different communities because of our history with racism and discrimination in this community. So when we see things like these types of documents that are, that are trying to softly bring us back in, the reality is still that, you know, there's still, somebody made a comment about the snowball. Um, snowball is still a very controversial business. I mean, even in the last couple of days when we had, you know, our our Buddha snows and stuffs, all I heard on TV and the news was, it's snow time, let's go snow, let's go skiing and get your skis out and do the ski. Had no regard for this mountain that we keep talking about is is a female mountain, is very sacred. We don't recreate on it. We do not practice these types of what mainstream society values. Those are not our values. And it, it's, one of the things at the beginning introduction is that is a Western concept we don't share. There are certain things that um we just have more respect for Mother Nature in that regard, that the creation of the water, of the pee water, if that's what it is, and it going and seeping into the ground. It's a desecration, not not to just the environment, but to the animals and all of the people that will be, you know, taking in this uh, these new chemicals. It's so frustrating to try to, we're we're trying to be very patient. And I think that that's, I'm very respectful of everybody's um I guess, presence with that. But it's, it's frustrating because I I, I want to make sure too that we do have something to say. And I I don't want to offend anybody that would ruin relationships. But as a, again, person that just lives here in Flagstaff, um, there's still so much to do. And I don't want this document to just be a cover of um the good things about what Flagstaff is trying to represent. There is a history that has created why Flagstaff is the way it is. And I don't think we have even yet to address it. Um, and that's why we have problems. And there's um, there's, you know, people here. And then there are the people over the mountain is what I've heard us be called. Um, it it gets more complicated. Um, so I I, I hope that kind of opens up for more people to to pitch in and say a few things. That's just, again, you know, uh, as a public person um and living in this community. Please.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Commissioner Francis. I mean, that's kind of why I was looking at the document, thinking about it as being in collaboration with native, the native people who live in Flagstaff. Because um in wanting to bring in and try to build long-lasting relationships with the native tribes, uh, I feel like there should be more representation. There should be more knowledge that it, we are giving more knowledge, you know. And I know that some people probably don't want to talk about a lot of their native knowledge that they grew up with. But I think it's important to be able to grow with the the community that we are establishing here. But um, yeah.
So uh Elsa, going back to your questions with RS seven, Policy RS ten, do you plan on uh, again, taking bits and pieces of the um comments that you've received? And then re um, re-try to maneuver seven and ten? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, um, and what I'm hearing from this group is that maybe we want a broader policy for, you know, either in addition to or instead of RS seven um that talks about collaboration. And yeah, I think um one option is to take bits and pieces from the the comments that, what the comments have suggested. But we don't, you know, we, if the commission wants to go in one direction that's not in the comments or feels that, you know, there's one comment that gets it right and the other ones, you know, we're less happy with. That's, you know, that's, that's what we can do.
I like that idea. I mean, it's, it's something. again, we're working through this document. Real quickly, I had a backtrack question. Is there, when are you submitting this document to the city?
So there's kind of some different, different drafts and different steps for that. So the, we're doing legal reviews over the next two weeks. So this week, we're going to submit the first four chapters, which includes the goal and policy chapter to legal review. However, we're going to do revisions after that. And if there's something that needs to be marked pending that we can, we can get a legal review on afterwards, we can do that as well. But city council is going to see the document for the May second, for, on May second, for their retreat with the Board of Supervisors. So there's going to be a draft sent out probably two weeks before that that will have all the revisions, all the reviews from legal, or comments from legal incorporated. And that's one step. And then depending on city council and the Board of Supervisors, there's going to be revisions after they see it. So I, I think we'd like to, to wrap up at least these comments before we send it to the council.
Okay. So for numbers RS seven on that line thirty-three, the individual says on a surface level, I'm a little skeptical, skeptical about whether the indigenous knowledge and cultural practices are something that people will be willing to share. In fact, we've, we've shared our, some of indigenous knowledge, and we have provided cultural practices for years. So it is already been implemented. Just even talking about the mountain is, is, is that. So then it could be interpreted as performative. I'm not part of the indigenous, so I don't feel, I won't speak about this. It's just an initial thought. It probably probably come off the wrong way. The approach we definitely used to engage in is going in a way that shows accountability for a lack of engagement prior. I'm really not sure, but I think this could use a little more structure to back it up. Okay, recognize and incorporate indigenous knowledge and cultural practices into natural and cultural resource affairs and projects. How does everybody feel?
Thinking I need a little bit more time again to look at all the comments and kind of put, put some input together.
Go ahead.
You know, I'm just kind of thinking about all these comments and stuff like that, you know, if, I was, originally, I was kind of looking at the whole regional plan and then looking at some of the comments and stuff like that. So if we're here to kind of, kind of help clarify some of the comments and the wording and stuff like that, I guess, probably have to look at it again, and then maybe send an email to you, Rose, that you could present? Or send over to Elsa? I don't know. I guess.
Yeah, I think if you can just look at each of the, I mean, I was hoping we'd talk about, you know, the, at least the important ones that we feel that, we feel we want to bring up and talk about today was the way that we would do it. But I mean, if Elsa, we don't have, let's see, hold on, let me look at my April calendar. We don't have anything, no presentations or anything solid really to talk about for April's meeting. So, and Elsa just said that maybe that could be another time we talk about this. And we can do that. At least we, we kind of have a structure on how we can get this done. But if you can start looking at the Excel sheet and providing comment in, in the comma, let's see. Somehow, may, I don't know, maybe on an email or another document, provide your comments according to the numbers. That would be really helpful. I mean, you don't have to comment on everything, but what you feel is important to you or important kind of like to our community. There's some comments that really don't, that are okay, you know, you can say, I agree with this. I'm happy that somebody's bringing this up, and we should incorporate it. Those kinds of things I think are needed. So, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm also happy to send an email that with, you know, I think like these are four policies that, you know, that people most commented on that relate to indigenous people. And just to kind of summarize, like, where we want the most, or where there are a lot of comments that we want feedback on, and also what we talked about in this conversation about adding some more content.
Yeah. Elsa, on line forty-three of the Excel spreadsheet, again, this Equity Climate Advisory Group. It's had a really nice statement to support RS seven. Develop specific, uh, replicable frameworks for such consulting and incorporating indigenous knowledge, including indigenous-led ecological monitoring, establish partnerships with tribal leadership, and incorporate two-way exchanges of knowledge, recognize tribal sovereignty and support co-managements, co-stewardship initiatives, create pathways to support tribal rights and data sovereignty when engaging. That one's also a good one.
Okay.
So I guess would it be helpful that we, we start, I guess, from this list of Excel comments, point out the ones that, like Rose had just said, that resonate with us and that we agree with? Is that how we want to do this?
Elsa, did you say you want to maybe send out a, a different summary?
Well, I can, I, I just meant that, like, in terms of, there's a lot of comments there, and I think the goals and policy comments are particularly important. So I can send out just an email that with the, with the goals and policies and the that we were talking about. But I think that, I think working in the spreadsheet is, is great. Like, if, if you want to go through and, and and give comments on the ones that, that are important.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely. I, I like that idea, Elsa. And then maybe because time is running short, we need like a deadline from like a week from today, or just to keep going with this momentum. So we're not dragging it out to next month when we meet, which is in like three weeks. Does that sound okay?
It's up to you, commissioners.
I like the week away. That's totally fine with me.
Right. I mean, I think we need to just, we can, if you want to work off the Excel sheet, do that. If you want to also work off what Elsa sends, you can do that. I think it's, all these comments are important for us to respond to. And just, just so you know, you know, that, that if you can get it done in the next week or so, then that's fine. I'll be out all next week. So I won't get, get to it until the first week of April anyway.
So who do we reply to? Is it?
Do we wait for you? You want to just send it, Elsa, should I just send it to you?
Yeah, that, that works for me. If you want to send it to myself and, and Sarah Decter. I'll put my email in the, in the chat and hers as well.
So I'm curious too, with us commissioners, are we doing this individually, or do we, do a few of us gather? Do you, how do you want to do that? I mean, I mean, is that possible? I don't know.
Yeah, I was wondering, is it gonna violate the open meeting laws if we have a discussion like elsewhere?
If we form a work group, an informal work group of three commissioners, we can talk about it. But if we, if we go for voting members, then we have to publicly post it, and we have to take minutes and all, all of that stuff.
Perhaps we can do groups of three.
We can't do that. We can't talk about the same subject and have different people.
Okay. So what is the, what is the best way to maneuver this? Again, just do it individually?
Yeah, I think we need to work on each individually, work on the spreadsheet, and then whatever Elsa sends to us, we can work on that. And then just have everybody be ready, we can have it ready for the April meeting, which is just a couple of weeks away.
I like that, especially if we don't have anything on the discussion items, you know, bring it up again, you know? That's, I'm on that, I'm on that page.
Yeah, I think the important thing is to work on it before the meeting. That way, once the meeting individually, and then once the meeting happens in, in April, then we can, we can have a really, and then Elsa will have written, have written things anyway, too. So, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you all for putting the time towards this. This is, we really appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioner Kaye, Wendy, jump in. I didn't see you there. You were here. But I didn't see you after a while. And then Marion just got in. I was like,
I've been here the whole time.
Commissioner Marshall is also here, but I think she just joined recently. But anyways. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, and we shall see you next month.
Thank you, Commissioner Francis and Commissioner Lance. You guys did great leading that. I didn't need to jump in because you were saying it all already. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Hoski as well.
And Hoski, yeah.
Thank you.
Agree with where the direction we're going. Thanks, everybody.
All right.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Ditto.
And you're adjourning the meeting at?
Adjourn the meeting at eleven, eleven AM.
Thanks, Elsa, for staying over.